Okay, it is 9:40 on Monday, September 14th. We have a special meeting in about 20 minutes. This is the Zoom recording of it. I'm starting this, obviously, I'm going to pause it. So the next activity you'll see will be the meeting. So pausing now.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get Judy connected. She's not getting any volume to hear us.
Gotcha.
We can, we can hear her. When she's unmuted.
Hey, unmute me.
Okay.
There she is. Well, she can't hear us.
Yeah, but I can't hear anybody.
Okay, Judy. Rick, are you still talking to her? Should I give her a call?
Okay, she's going to hang up. All right, somebody call me.
I'm calling you.
Okay.
Okay, this is what, this is what I think, we all think you want to do, is that you can get email on your phone. So you can get the notice from Friday of the meeting. And it, and besides, you know, there's that Zoom contact, but then below that, there's also a phone number. So if you call in with your phone number, you can hear the meeting and you can leave it up on your computer so you can see it.
Okay, all right, let me, maybe I can just talk to you on my phone. All right, let me get the number on my phone. Okay, all right, I'll try that. Okay, bye. Bye.
They will hang tight a couple more minutes.
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can get Judy connected.
Sorry about these, these things.
That's all right.
I'm just looking at this meeting, the Zoom request, and there's a bazillion phone numbers on here.
Yeah, just Tacoma or something.
My call cannot be completed at this time.
Hey, we can hear you.
Well, we always could.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you.
Wait a minute.
Try another one.
All right. What number am I supposed to dial? The one in San Jose?
Sure, try that.
It says meeting ID number. Is that the one I dial?
Here, wait.
Somebody shake your head.
Sure.
Meeting ID number?
No, no.
No, it didn't work.
There should be phone numbers and then the ID and password. You'll need that to get in.
Yeah, she can't hear you. She can't hear us.
Dial by your location, San Jose. Shall I dial that one?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to check in with Tony real quick, see how he's doing. I'll be right back, you guys.
Meeting password followed by pound?
Yes. It's on the list.
I'm in the meeting now.
Oh, good. Can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Can, can you hear us yet, Judy?
Can you hear us?
It says the host has to resume the hold. You have me on hold.
I put you in now and you should be in.
All right.
Can you, can you hear us?
Barely, just a minute.
Barely, just a minute.
Now we have an echo, Judy. Let me mute you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
You're on.
Sure. Just a minute. Can I hear you?
Can I unmute the computer?
Yeah, I can hear you.
You can hear me.
Success.
Wait, let me go get my headphones, just a minute. Hold on, hold on. Oh, you guys. Just a minute. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
You guys? Oh, all right, I got my headphones on.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
All right. Good, okay. How are you, David? Are you set?
As ready as I can be, Mayor. We still have streaming problems and I'm sorry about that, but we can commence and upload it after the fact.
All right. Well, why, why don't we go ahead and call this city council, meeting, special city council meeting to order for City of Lincoln City. This is Monday, September 14th at 10:13 a.m. And remind folks that are listening that, or checking in, we still have public comment@lincolncity.org if they want to make comments. And of course, the chamber is open and we have staff there to assist. The primary purpose for this is one agenda item, and that's to ratify through a resolution the emergency declaration called earlier. But I'll do a roll call if it's all right. David, Counselor Hoagland?
Here.
All right, Counselor Casper?
Oh, here.
Counselor Hinton?
Here.
Counselor Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Mark?
I'm here.
And I'm Anderson. So with that, how about, there's no consent agenda. How about if we go to public comments? And if there's anybody in the chamber?
Mayor, we have a couple of ladies here in the council chambers. Counselor Parsons is scooting off the laptop and we'll get this going in just a second.
All right, thank you. She's muted.
There we go. Now, now I'm live. Okay, I've got some questions for the council about the evacuation process.
You know, if I, I could interrupt you. Really, this is a point for comments. It's not an opportunity for discussion. So why don't you give us your name?
Uh huh.
And, you know, raise your questions.
Yes.
And then, you know, we'll, we'll try to get back to you or whatever.
Okay. Okay, my name's Fran Lannan. And the comments that I have are, there were several items that happened during the evacuation that I have, have comments on. Number, number one, pardon?
Yeah, go ahead.
Number one is the Devil's Lake building that is on both Devil's Lake roads. Why were they both done at the same time? Because we had people that couldn't evacuate because we had all the traffic going down the 101 rather than through Devil's Lake. Both the backside of Devil's Lake and the one that's over by the hospital. That's my number one question. Number two, who has a hospital that doesn't have a generator? There is no excuse for that, as far as I'm concerned. A hospital should not be shut down during an emergency situation because they do not have power. I work at Lakeview and we have to have generators there. It's a mandate that we have that. So I need to know why the hospital didn't have a generator. Number three, alerting the public that there is an issue that you need to evacuate going door to door is unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable. Can we get like an Amber Alert for that? I mean, everybody gets an Amber Alert, but that, that didn't happen. The information to the community was almost nonexistent. And that's really scary, really scary. If we'd had a tsunami, we'd have been wiped out. So that's totally unacceptable. We could have put up information signs telling people who had to evacuate. There were all kinds of things that could have and should have happened here that did not, and I find that very distressing. The one thing I will say is that the police were amazing through this whole thing. They were in there, they were directing traffic. As soon as we got on the road, they were directing traffic. They knew exactly what to do and I was very impressed by that. So, Mr. Palmer, congratulations. And, let's see. We were unable to access the internet because the power was down. So information to come when the power is down is, is a huge block. Granted, I do have cell service, but a lot of people do not. So that's the reason why I, and the power, I totally understand. It was totally out of our realm. But we had no way to get information with no power. So if you were going to use Channel 4 to get information to the people, it didn't happen. So I mean, there are all kinds of quagmires that, that happened here in this that shouldn't have. And I think these are things that the committee, the council need to work on these badly. I mean, this is sad. If this ever got out to the news media, we would be a joke. Absolute joke. And that's all I've got to say. Lisa, did you want to comment?
Get a wipe that down before they sit down.
Is that right?
Yeah, go ahead. Just, just go ahead and give us your name, if you would.
Yes, Lisa Corzine. And I, the comments that I would like to make, everything that Fran just stated is also on, on my list as well. So I would, would like the answers to that as well. I would like, the other comment is that as far as the no emergency broadcasting and the different things that, that went wrong, I'm, would really, really like to know how you can put forth an $85 million plan to beautify an area when this money could be used for our police departments, emergency broadcasting, a plan? There was no plan. I got more information on what I needed to do from my daughter and my sister that are in Texas. They were calling me and giving me updated information. There were so many, so much fake news out there. And, and Mayor, I'm sorry, but I never heard from you. I mean, when, I mean, I would have thought the mayor of the city with this kind of calamity going on would have addressed his, his constituents. That's a real big concern for me. So again, everything that Fran had said, like if it had been a tsunami, we'd all be gone. Our, our fire departments, our first responders. I mean, even McKay's grocery stores has a generator, for God's sake. And the hospital doesn't? I mean, please, that is just horrible. I mean, you're putting people's lives that are already in danger in the hospital, in danger again, to transport them. So that, that's all I really have to say. I mean, I'd be very embarrassed. I am embarrassed that our city had no plan. And I think moving forward, that's something that really, really needs to be focused on. And I think our fire departments, our first responders all need the most updated equipment. We don't need roundabouts up north. We need to take care of the people, the small businesses that still have never been helped during the COVID and now they're shut down with the fires. I mean, there's so much more this community could be doing from the council if, if we just get together and do it because that's where money needs to go. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Anyone else there, David?
No, Mayor, no one else.
Okay. If we could have Ron, then, check with Ron to see if there are any written reports in.
And that was in relation to the 24-hour rule. So I'm going to just save that until the 28th, when you have that on your agenda again.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, then, moving on. And, you know, yeah, why don't, why don't we go to the main agenda item? That's this resolution, the resolution ratifying the Echo Mountain Complex Emergency Declaration. Is that?
Actually, it's on, on September 8th, when we went into this emergency. I, Richard prepared and I signed an emergency declaration specifically for the Echo Mountain Fire Complex. And it requires that within seven days, the city council accepts that, rejects it, modifies it. And so you have both those documents in your package. Richard?
That's pretty much it. Have this meeting because it requires ratification within seven days, so. All right. So, council, what I'd do is take a motion to approve the Resolution 2020-21. Deanna?
I have actually some recommended changes to the, to the language.
Okay, why don't we go first? If you'd make the motion to approve, then during discussion, we can, you know, make those.
Okay. I move to approve Resolution 2020-21, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City declaring an emergency as a result of the Echo Mountain Complex Fire.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Park, Council Parsons. Thank you. Okay, discussion. Yes, Deanna?
Okay, in, under the description, if you're, I'm not sure how you have this, but let's just go from the first page of the resolution and the last bullet. And it describes on September 9th, 2020 morning, the county fire district ordered Level 3 evacuation leave now. And then it has a description. The description is inaccurate and I think we need to, to revise that to what the county actually put out and, because they provided that evacuation and what they said, what, on their communication on September 9th at 11:57, it says, "For Level 3, go now Lincoln City. First bullet, Northwest 40th and all the way north from the ocean to East Devil's Lake Road and all of East Devil's Lake Road." And that's what there says. And the way that it's written in our resol, our draft resolution here, it doesn't include the villages. It doesn't include the voyage area. So it's missing a big chunk of the city that it was actually evacuated. And so I think it needs to be corrected. I would leave it up to the people who, the counselors for Ward 2 and Ward 3 to check out that language. But it, the language that I was drawing from was from the, from the county. So, and I haven't read, let me see. And then there's a Level 2 from the county that says Northwest 40th, South from the ocean to East Devil's Lake Road, Safeway to Outlet Mall. And then Level 1 was Outlet Mall, South all the way to Southwest 12th Street to Taft. And of course, they adjusted the boundaries later, but those were the initial boundaries and I'm assuming that's what the emergency declaration was based on.
Mr. Appicello, could you help us with that description or?
Yeah, I, I took the description from what Ken gave me. I did not take, you know, I did not take it from the county sources. Ken gave this information. So I don't have the document that Deanna is referring to. If you want to send that, I can correct that. Or we could make this a generic paragraph and say, you know, there were various evacuations ordered by the county and just leave it a reference to the county.
Um, Richard, I did send that to you and to Ron a little bit ago, the actual page from the county's updates.
That's it. Mr. Mayor, I have a copy of that and so I can make sure that Richard gets that if you want.
So I guess the, the question would be, you, should, should this resolution mimic the exact order? Or as Mr. Appicello has said, you know, more generic because it, it is commonly changing, all right, you know, it was and continued to be. Mr. Appicello, could you help us with what the, the legal process?
Yeah, there's no, there's no, this is just style. This could just say on, on September 9th, 2020, the county ordered several evacuation orders or issued several evacuation orders affecting Lincoln City. And that's all it needs to say. I mean, you could say those evacuation orders were posted on county websites and changed quite frequently. But there's no absolute legal requirement to set these forth. What we're trying to do is indicate what the basis for the emergency declaration is. That, this is the language I took from Ken. At some point, this might have been correct, but things changed. So it's up to you. It's just a matter of style. If you approve this with the change to the bullet point to reflect the language Ms. Hinton identified, that's fine. If you want to just say, on September 9th, 2020, the county issued several evacuation orders. And we don't have to say anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the latter, if you want my opinion.
And that being, that being the shorter version?
Yeah, I think it's more, because things were changing. It was so good. I think we want to capture every part of it and we don't want to forget Mitch's neighborhood.
Okay.
Because he was out.
Does anybody have a problem with just going to the more generic, shorter wording? No problems? All right.
Okay, I'll revise it.
Okay, is any other discussion regarding this resolution?
So should I amend my motion?
As, as modified, could we do, how do we handle that amendment, Richard? Or just that modification of that paragraph?
Well, you can, the motion maker and the second maker can accept the change as modified. Or you can make an amendment motion, a separate motion, it's up to you.
Why don't we, yeah, why don't we back it up and, you know, accept the amended change? Is that all right, Counselor Hinton?
Yes, please.
And Counselor Parsons?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you both. Again, any further discussion? With that, how about a roll call for approval? I could do that. Oh, there's David.
Hi. I can do it. Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler, I, I wonder if, you know, talked in the discussion with some of the comments, and I'm sure there's more comments out there that public has, very similar to these, looking for information. Is there a process of kind of a after-event review, report that we would be able to provide the citizens with, you know, information around these and other kind of questions that have come up?
Yes, as a matter of fact, as we are, as we are moving out of this emergency, and I still would like to emphasize that this is, continues to be an emergency and it's still an active fire. It has not been fully put out. But we have been trying to keep track of the comments that have been, of the comments that have come in. We will have an after-action review. We'll use those kind of comments to, to evaluate this. But I can give you a few highlights of some of the comments that we have received.
Okay.
There, there seems to be a misunderstanding as to the city's role in this emergency. This emergency actually is being managed by the county's emergency operations center because the fire is, has occurred within the county. We have been providing assistance to the county through all levels of our department, or all levels of our departments have been providing assistance. The information that we have has been coming primarily through the county. And I'd say if there's one area that, that we can improve upon is, on all government organizations, is that the information began a little bit sparse and then picked up as it went. And so what you're receiving now is very, very good information, but it evolved over the last week. I might also point out, you're only six days into this emergency. It was actually a week from yes, or tomorrow, that it actually began. So that's an area. The other area that I think is becoming important is trying to identify where people are going for their information and how people are receiving the information. It seems that some of the traditional ways that people receive information is not happening. And I'm going to come a little bit back again to the, the management of that. The county has put out, and they put out, I believe it was on the 9th, the 8th or the 9th, a list of the phone numbers and places for people to call and things like that. We're trying to identify where people are really going for their information so that we have in future. that we have in future emergencies, a better way of communicating, uh, to people. Uh, it seems like a lot of what we've been doing is trying to direct people to where the information is. And a lot of the responses, I don't want to go there. Tell me through the way I receive information. And so we'll, and so that's one of the after-action things that we'll be doing is trying to identify, uh, identify that. Um, a lot of the other areas, a lot of discussion, there's two other areas that I think are, that we're starting to see come into, one coming in today. The other area discussion we heard again a little bit this morning from the comments that we heard was the difficulty in getting out of town when there's only one way out of town. And, uh, what we saw in, in the evacuation is that, is that you had the levels of, um, uh, of one, two, and three. Three was the level that said, get out, it's time to get out. But we saw a lot of people in level two and even level one that were all evacuating at the same time. That was one of the, uh, areas of the, that caused the gridlock. But the most significant reason, and it's one that, um, we'll have to discuss, especially with our police department and our sheriff's department, is when you only have one way out of town, um, uh, how do you keep that moving, uh, quickly? One of the things that caused some of the gridlock were a lot of people were trying to find alternative ways to go south, which means they were going down Harbor, they were going down Jetty, they were coming off the side streets, but they all eventually came to one oh one. And so, uh, that's, that's part of what we will be, uh, looking at. Now, the other, now, just this morning, the kind of calls that we're getting is from people that are, have come back home. And I might point out that you have three different types of emergencies that all have occurred at the same time. You have the COVID nineteen, you have the fire emergency, but we also have a lot of debris that came down because of the winds that occurred last week. And so a lot of what we're hearing now is, um, is not the cleanup of the debris on the streets because we've done a pretty good job with that. Is when are you going to start coming to pick up my debris that I bagged and put out on the, uh, on the garbage or out on the curbside? And so we are currently working with, um, our staff and have a call into, uh, North Lincoln Sanitary about, uh, the pickup of those. And at this point, I just advise people, just be a little bit patient, um, as we are trying to, uh, bring back many of our own employees that evacuated. Um, we're dealing with employees that we've had some that have lost their homes and trying to assist them. Um, and so we're also trying to, trying to prioritize the actions our staff needs to take. And so we will be coming. But those are the kind of calls that we're starting to get now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, any, uh, immediate questions from council regarding that? Um, is we'll put more of a synopsis out. I think, uh, that, you know, we owe it to ourselves as well as, but the public. But, uh, Council Hinton?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to say that I know that this was incredibly difficult for city staff. Um, Ron was working around the clock. I know that because he was communicating as best he could. I just wanted to remind everybody that, um, communication was very, very difficult. We had no power, if everyone remembers. We had no cell service, if everyone remembers. We had no internet service, if everyone remembers. So when we get to the point, um, past debriefing, which is what Ron's speaking of now, past that point and how we look forward to putting in place a real, um, evacuation plan and communication plan and all of that, I think we need to, um, keep in mind that our Lincoln City, um, community relies on Lincoln City. Um, and so we have, I think, um, not just the opportunity, but I believe that we have the obligation to somehow, um, communicate with our, with our community members during, um, difficult times, which this was certainly off the chart. And, um, I would hope that we would have an opportunity for all of us to have a work session following this after people have, um, um, get all their immediate needs met. So we can talk about this in real time, um, while we're still mopping up. So we, um, our minds are sharp and that we can, um, provide the best, um, feedback from our wards to, um, the city staff because there are specific things, issues, um, ideas, suggestions from each ward because, um, I was in communication with so many people, um, through text. I could text for a while. And so if I had, um, phone number, I mean, there needs to be, we need to drill down to the individuals within each ward and how, um, like Ron was saying, how do they receive their information? Um, I have a little bit of a benefit that I'm FEMA trained. Um, and so, and especially in communication regarding difficult times like this. And so I had that, I had that background, so I could rely on that. But not all of us have it. I don't know if we've all gone through the FEMA training. I know it's available. Um, I'm sure that staff has already gone through that or some of it, but we should do that. Also, for the folks at home that are watching us, there is a hierarchy. When we are in a declared emergency and FEMA is involved, there is a hierarchy of communication and actions that are taken. And it goes up. And, um, and so as we remember when the police handed over to the county, when Ron handed over to the commissioners, when all of that ramping up happened to a point, we still need to communicate down here with everybody. And so, um, when we get to the point where we can actually have a thorough discussion about what a, a communication plan looks like for the city, um, I think all of that, um, is important. And I have a few other issues beyond that or that I would like to add to the discussion at a work session in the future, if I could continue.
What, could you hold off on that? Uh, could we move into, uh, and maybe this will, uh, incorporate what you're talking about. But, uh, Ron, uh, could you update us on the, uh, the next steps? We're certainly, as you pointed out, we're in an emergency. Uh, the fire's not out. Uh, there's still a lot to do. But part of that is we start forming, uh, recovery and the needed, uh, support services. Uh, again, I think the, the primary questions around that is whose point, who's in charge? And, you know, how does the city play a role and what is our role?
Okay. I'll do my best on that, Mr. Mayor. So, um, again, as we move, uh, to the end of the fire emergency, um, and as you can see, the evacuation levels have been downgraded. We move, uh, into the recovery phase. That recovery phase consists of taking assessments, uh, and looking at, um, uh, damages. Uh, there's much that's already been done and continues to be done, although I don't have a lot of information on that in the Otis area. The firefighters have been working on that. Uh, recovery will include things such as displaced persons, um, loss of homes, loss of property, um, uh, people that, uh, may be coming into town to continue to work on that. One of perhaps the biggest issue is in managing the volunteers. Uh, that in and of itself is a major, major project. Uh, I have filled in numerous calls, um, on people who want to help and want to volunteer big hearts and applaud them for that. At this point, we will be working with the county on, on those services. Uh, the county, um, is currently, uh, receiving, um, they, they have been receiving donations and they have a, a space down in, um, Newport where those are being collected. Uh, they will be working, uh, with Red Cross to provide, um, a place in town where goods and items can be distributed. They have put out a message at this point to, that they're not currently receiving donations because they're taking stock of all of the donations they've already received, which is considerable. And so, uh, we will continue to work on those areas. And, um, uh, um, I don't know, I, well, I better not say that. So, uh, again, this will be something because most of the damages occurred outside of the city's boundaries will continue to be managed through the county and we will be working with them.
Yeah. Um, and again, uh, just to reiterate, the Red Cross has, uh, closed the facility in Newport and has moved up as a resource center to the community center. Is that, is that correct in Lincoln City?
Yeah. And it's important to point out that that is a, a service, it's not an overnight evacuation point. Uh, if somebody needs some help, the Red Cross will work with them to find a location to be in, but it's not an evacuation overnight center. But it is their service center that opened up this morning and will continue to operate there as, as needed.
And I think the, uh, for the, certainly the short term, uh, people that have needed it are getting, uh, vouchers, hotel vouchers and whatnot for the short term. But, uh, that raises the question of, uh, our, our ability to help assist, you know, those who, um, don't have housing any longer. Um, and, and that will, uh, if I hear you right, kind of come through the county with what our role might be?
It, it will. Um, and we will be stay, uh, staying actively involved with them. Um, uh, there are, um, like I said, numerous organizations that have been calling, making volunteers, even opening their own, people opening their own homes for people to stay. Um, and, uh, but the information on the damages, at least for the coming into the city, is, is coming in on a trickling basis. And so as that information comes forward and we learn more, then we will work with, uh, the county and the other resources that are available, uh, to help, um, to help, help people go through that.
Okay. All right. Uh, uh, Council Hinton?
Um, while we're just talking about housing, temporary housing, I'm just wondering if, um, I know Red Cross is using vouchers for the hotels and motels. And, um, what about VRDs? And then it brings me to the question of during, um, the COVID shutdown, excuse me, the city purchased some vouchers or line of credit from the lodging industry, um, which included VRDs, which might be better for families. Um, I'm just wondering, um, I guess this is a question for Richard. Is, um, is there any legal way in which we can use that for this emergency? We've already purchased them. That's, um, it's TRT money. I get that. But is there some way that due to the emergency of the fire, that we could use the emergency of that?
I, I think that the, the problem is the use of the TRT funds and the restrictions that come along with that. So, um, we'll look at it, but I, I'm not very hopeful that there is a way around that.
But even the state is, you know, issued an emergency because of the fires. So could we check that out? There might be some way in which we bring those two together and that would be beneficial for everybody.
I, I don't know if the states, uh, again, it's, it's the funds we used have restrictions. I'll look and see if I find a way around.
I just thought maybe that might be another resource. Um, and then, um, the other thing I was thinking about is rebuilding. I know that's down the road a ways, but I'm just wondering what part the city can play, um, in that. And, and I know we, you know, this is a ways down the road, like I said, because first we have to do the temporary housing. And, um, but the rebuilding, I'm just wondering if we play a part as, um, assisting the county with anything like engineering or planning, um, any in-kind kinds of partnerships we can have. MOUs with the county to just help kind of get those folks back. I don't, we haven't heard account, I haven't heard account of how many houses were lost. And so I'm not even sure the extent that which, of what we're talking about. But it sure seemed like an awful lot of property was, um, at least damaged to the point of rebuilding. So.
Council Hinton, I, I, and the others, I, I would, uh, agree and remind us all that I, I think this county has been very cooperative, uh, and each of the communities with each other. Um, so your suggestion is, would certainly be right on top of the list of, uh, we, we, the city would be more than, uh, willing to participate and assist. And quite frankly, uh, it's not known or seen, but we've done that already, uh, even through the height of the emergencies with moving generators around to, uh, at the sacrifice of the city to support something else. So, you know, that kind of cooperation is definitely already there and will exist. And I, I think, again, to your point, Council Hinton, uh, it's not in the city, but our, you know, a big part of our workforce is certainly, uh, adversely affected. And so we want to make sure, uh, they're accommodated. So, you know, to support not only them, but the, the city as a whole. So, you know, all effort definitely goes that way and has been and will continue to be.
And I would just put a PS on that, um, Mayor, is, um, is that when maybe Ron's going to give us an opportunity to have a work session or another council, um, meeting to talk through this, that we actually line all those things out, that we develop a list of what we've done cooperatively, what we, you know, there were some questions by, um, the two women who spoke with us earlier about concerns about the hospital closing down. There's a reason for all of that and people just need information. I think that is the weakness that we had. And so, um, if we could fill in all those blanks, even going back to the beginning, um, and making that, um, accessible to everybody and saying it out loud at one of our meetings, I think would be really helpful.
Sure. Right. I, I think that's the purpose. All right. Anybody else have, uh, questions or Mr. Hoogland?
Mr. Mayor, um, can I need to turn the time over to, um, Tony for just a minute?
Oh, okay. Hold on, Mr. Hoogland.
Sorry, Riley. Um, I just want to let everybody know that we're fully aware that the stream is down. Um, there's nothing we can do about it. I have a call into the vendor. They're not answering their phone, which is, uh, an indicator that they're having issues, um, with all of their customers. Uh, I understand the timing is, um, horrible for our stream to be down. People are depending on seeing this meeting. We will upload the Zoom meeting as soon as this is over. Uh, it'll be available to the public. It is, channel four is up. So it's on channel four. Council chambers are open. I apologize. There's nothing I can do about this. It's not a conspiracy. It's, we're not trying to hide, um, from our, our, the public. Um, it's just a technical issue and the timing's horrible. Um, so I apologize. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that. I've been on the phone with the vendor. They won't answer. Uh, left messages. It's usually a sign that there's a problem on their end. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony, for letting us know.
Tony, that, Tony, um, I've, um, received comments that people that are, that are watching this on channel four can't hear the microphone very well that you're talking into.
I think, I think, uh,
I hear you, but.
Well, there's, there's, there's two inputs. This is not ideal. Um, there's the, there's an input that goes into the system that feeds channel four. There's an input that goes into Zoom. Um, we have to speak closer to this microphone for folks to hear us, um, on channel four. So I'll make sure that Mr. Chandler has a microphone closer to his mouth when he speaks and, uh, speaks louder and that, that should resolve that issue. Um, I apologize. This is not an ideal, um, setup for us. And it's worked thus far. Um, there's going to be technical issues and it really is horrible that, uh, we had a streaming issue today. Um, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tony. All right. Uh, Mr. Hoogland, you have the floor?
I was just, I was, uh, some people brought to the attention of some of the restrictions about using short-term rentals for emergency housing. There's some kind of tenant laws or something like that, that it was asked if we could temporarily relieve those somehow tenant laws or some of the, uh, short-term rental homeowners feel like if they allowed their home to temporarily be long-term but short-term, uh, rentals, that they would somehow be stuck and, uh, have to house these people indefinitely. And so there was questions about being asked, could there be a, a way in which we would allow that? And then the second question was, is I know Ron and I talked about it the other day, but the emergency management system had an error. And if there's more information on that, that people could hear about because the, it didn't notify people as it should have. And so I don't, I haven't heard much talk about that and explaining to people that, you know, how many more people have signed up. I know there were thousands. I know there were thousands of people that signed up in that short amount of time, and how important it is, but unfortunately with the cell towers and all the power, all the power going out, we can't, can't, we, you know, isn't able to transmit, but, so those, those two things.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Council Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So obviously there is a disconnect between those providing the information and those trying to receive information, at least to, to many people who are trying to receive information. It makes me, I'm reminded of the comment that Jim Coos used to make when he was talking about emergency preparations. He used to say, if, if, when a disaster hits, if you're asking, what are they going to do to help us, you're asking the wrong question. He would say, we all have a responsibility to make sure that we are prepared. I personally, in my house here at the south end of Lincoln City, where, my heart goes out for all those who've lost what they've lost, the, the threat never really, of course, we were worried, but we never really felt threatened here. Point, I'm, I'm sorry, I got some background noise. The point is, when I tried to find information during this past several days, I was able to find it. I went to the county website, I'm fortunate enough to be getting calls from Mr. Chandler, thank you, twice a day with his updates, but those calls, the information I, I received mirrored the information I was seeing on the county websites. And eventually, I, I'm glad to see we did, put, put the information on the city website as well, that, that, we, we definitely learned some lessons, and, and I think if anything like this comes, comes close to happening again, I, I think we'd be better prepared to put the answers up. But I, I was able to find the information. I did receive automatic calls from the county alert when we went to Level 1 down here at the south end of the city. My phone rang, I got a recorded message. A minute later, my wife's phone rang and she got the same message. Are people connected to the Lincoln Alerts system? Do they know to go to the website? Power went out and the internet went down. What did I do? I own three portable chargers for my phones. I was able to keep connected even though the power was out. On my phone, I have a personal hotspot, which gives me, as long as the phone is getting the internet, it gives me Wi-Fi. I was able to keep my, during the entire time that the power was out, I had the internet because I had portable power. I've actually, after a couple days, the power on those chargers ran out, I just purchased a device that hooks into my car so that I can use the car engine, car battery, to power my devices. Point is, I, I'm probably less prepared than a lot of people in a lot of ways, but we all have responsibility to be sure that we, the, the technology is out there to be connected. If you felt that you were not getting the information you needed, it's really, you can learn how to connect, and, and I encourage people to try to do that. Not everybody has the money to buy, I mean, I'm fortunate enough to be able to buy some of these devices. I want to say, for less than a hundred dollars, I, I bought these devices that I, that have kept me connected. So I, I was a little curious, when we were building a new communication tower at the police station, is, is, when that goes, is up and running, I'm wondering if that might be a way to help connect people when an emergency occurs? So I'm curious when people say there was no evacuation plan. I heard, what I heard was people in certain areas of the city needed to leave, and that meant they needed to head south. And I'm not sure what, beyond that information, what I as a resident would need to know. Get in my car and go and head south. It's terrible that the traffic backed up the way it did. Frankly, even if, when I saw that West Devils Lake Road and East Devils Lake Road were going to be closed for the same period of time, I thought, who decided that? That's going to be a mess. But honestly, as far as the evacuation, all the residents along those row, whoever is going to use those roads, still had to come through the Nell Scott Gap bottleneck, so everybody still has to take the same route. So all, all those things that are, I understand people are upset, but an emergency situation is an emergency situation, you, you have to, you have to be prepared and, and you, and take some responsibility as well. So again, really sorry for those who lost what they lost, I hope, I hope we can find a way to help. I spent the couple days down Neighbors for Kids, which was a donation site, we were overwhelmed, it is incredible how many people came pouring in to drop off clothing, to the point where I'm a little, I, I'm a little concerned that too much is coming in, and what are we going to do with all, I hope, I, I think it's going to be a logistical problem to try to sort out all the stuff that's coming in, so I think people need to be aware of that as well. I guess, I guess that's really what I had.
And I, you know, that's a good point, Council Mark, let me remind what Ron has indicated before about donations, you know, it is a, a big issue and certainly mostly very much appreciated, but we need to wait until we can identify what it is that is actually needed, and so we can, you know, then make a call for that and avoid stuff that's, you know, not going to be useful at the moment. And we'll, there'll be plenty of information out on that shortly. Ron, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Council Hinton?
I, I just have a couple things more. One is, one of the public commenters mentioned something about the, she called it the $85 million beautification, it is not. I just want to clarify that, there are so many misunderstandings about what the urban renewal district is about, and I just want to say it is not a new tax, it is not additional money from people, you, no one will even know the difference because it's just a redistribution. And I also want to point out that within the, the plan that we, city council adopted for the new urban renewal district, there is an item, one of the items of the projects that we listed was emergency preparedness. We are all over this, folks. I know it's not apparent because people are listening to other people rather than reading the plan themselves, but we have emergency preparedness as one of our items that we found is a priority. So I think that people ought to be rethinking about how urban renewal can be helpful for all of the functions of a city, and, and we're just, and I just want to leave it at that, people go read the plan, it's on the, on our website, and, and the second thing I have to say is I just want to throw out as loud and as clear as I can, a big thank you to the, to the North Lincoln firefighters, they have been doing an amazing job. Sure, they have received help from outside of the area, outside of their district, but we really appreciate the hands-on, they're doing Pacific Power, Northwest Natural, our own police department, they worked above and beyond, the sheriff's office and all of those essential workers, Ron Chandler, who was there 24 hours, if, you know, the guy hasn't slept, we need to give him a break, Ken Murphy and all the city staff, and to all of our community members who have stepped up and helped out in every and any way they can think of. This is a city with a big heart.
Thank you. And I would add to that, the, again, the whole county and other communities in this county have really stepped up to house our citizens or area citizens as they went south to evacuate and food and everything else, so. All right, with that, then I'll remind you that there's a, we moved the official council meeting to next Monday, so we've got council meeting the next two Mondays in a row, the 21st and 28th. More to come on that. And with that, nothing else for the good of the order? Will, oh, Council Casper? We can't hear you, we can't hear you.
Hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, I'm, I'm the technical problem out here. I just wanted to add a teeny bit of information along with all the gratitude that has already been expressed, but let us all look at our own homes and our own family and have those little to-go packs ready. In my own household, the medications that were needed were packed, small things. So I strongly urge everyone to take care of your family and their needs immediately, so when it happens again, we're a little more prepared.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call this meeting adjourned then. Thank you and be safe.